Good evening. And welcome to the city council meeting held October 21st, 2024 at 5:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and inform everyone about the Open Meetings Acts posted in the council chambers and accessible to members of the public. At this time, I'd like to stand, offer a moment of silence, and then recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need a motion for approval of the... Oh, sorry, sorry. Roll call, please.
Grandquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb. McCarthy. Miren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Clausen.
I'm here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Mayor.
A little light tonight. Do we need approval of the motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Second. All right, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, motion carries.
All right, now we need a motion to approve the full agenda.
I'll motion approve the full agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, at this time, we are on to special presentations. And the first presentation I have here is a proclamation for November 1st, 2024 as Extra Mile Day. And I will go ahead and read that. Whereas the city of Norfolk, Nebraska is a community that acknowledges the special vibrancy exists within our entire community when individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the city of Norfolk is a community that encourages citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, families, friends, and community. And whereas the city of Norfolk is a community that chooses to shine light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within the community to who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the city of Norfolk acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America Foundation to create 550 extra mile cities, states, in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2024. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Shane Clausen, council president of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2020 as Extra Mile Day in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, and urge each individual in our community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organization, families, community, country, or world a better place. Do I have anybody to accept this proclamation here tonight? We'll just hold on to that one then, okay? All right. Next, we have a presentation by the Tree Advisory Board of the Green Leaf Award to a residence or to a business for outstanding planting of variety of trees and landscaping. Who's handling that one? Okay, here we go.
All right. Good evening. I am T. Bush, and I am the chair of the City of Norfolk Tree Board, and Lon Atwood is with me. He is a member of the board as well. So I'm going to go ahead and read, and we have a couple of little certificates to give out tonight. For many years, the City of Norfolk Tree Advisory Board has awarded the Green Leaf Award to one business and one residential property based on what can be seen from the street or the street appeal, and incorporates the innovative use of trees and plantings. This year's business award goes to the Calmwater Brogan Law Office Building located at 3204 West Benjamin Avenue. The artful placement of planting beds with perennials and the variety of trees in their carefully designed locations combine to give great effect and the promise of a welcoming, mature landscape. Congratulations on your fine efforts. We can get the Calmwater and/or Brogan.
All right, do we have Calmwater?
Never gonna land.
And we'll just have to put them there and close for...
Landscape guy.
Come on in.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. Perfect.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Lon. It's good to see you. Thanks, Lon.
The residential award goes to Jay Wolf, household at 2306 Random Road. The mature and varied trees have been highlighted with beds of perennials chosen to bloom throughout the growing season. This obvious labor of love has transformed the yard into a botanical wonderland. Congratulations again on your contribution to beautify our city.
Come on in for the photo.
All right. Ready? Three, two, one. Perfect.
Thanks. We're now on to the public hearings and related action. First one we have up in front of us is a public hearing to consider a Class C liquor license application for INE LLC doing business as... I might butcher this. Cafareos Tacos y Marcino's or The Pier Seafood at 312 West Norfolk Avenue. And the manager application for this is Izero Montevio. Is that right? Did I pronounce that name correctly? And is the applicant here tonight? Okay, so...
Ask for my name.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So on October 3rd, 2024, I received the Class C liquor license application for an INE LLC DBA Chaparros Tacos y Mariscos, The Pier Seafood, 312 West Norfolk Avenue. This location has had a Class C license since June of 2023. That was issued to the previous owner for The Pier Seafood. INE LLC recently purchased the business, and that is the reason for the new application and license. A background check was completed by the Norfolk Police Division and is attached to the agenda. Following the public hearing, the next item is the resolution, which is the council's official recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission on issuance of the license. And I don't know if the applicant is here to speak on his behalf. If not, I can try to answer any questions you may have.
We are now in the open hearing, so we have discussion now at this time. Any public comment at this point in time during this discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing. And we'll consider approval of Resolution 2024-65 of a Class C liquor license application. So we need a motion to adopt that. Somebody can make a motion.
Do we have any conversation here?
Motion for consideration, yeah.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of Resolution 2024-65.
Before we do that, don't we have a discussion amongst council?
Can we have a conversation here?
Well, I asked that, nobody...
That's probably...
We're still open for discussion right now, after the second.
It's open for discussion amongst council, though.
Yeah, we just need a second. Did we get a second?
So right now, is the motion to just go ahead and open Resolution 2024-65? So Frank made a motion just to open it.
I'll second Frank's.
Okay, and now we'll go ahead and discuss.
Yeah, so any discussion?
I guess I have some question is, with the background check that is required, did anything suspicious come about the background check on this particular application?
Yes, so on that, so our acting chief, Ty, was able to run a background check on this individual. A couple of things did come back in the background check that appeared suspicious on the application. I don't know if you want me to dive deeper in that. You can read the background memo that is attached, but I will. Something that did pop up is, under the temporary license that INE LLC is holding, there has already been a liquor violation.
I'll just add, I think right now, the actions potentially before the council would be to either forward a recommendation of approval, or take a no position on this application, or a vote of no. And those recommendations would then go to the State Liquor Commission, who would have ultimate authority to approve this license. So those three would be the three options available to council.
And traditionally, we've taken a no position, correct, almost at most.
That's correct, and we did amend our ordinance not that long ago here, a year, a year and a half or so, in order to basically have the council consider each license. We used to forward a no recommendation, a letter of no recommendation to the commission, but now we consider each one under hearing.
Yeah, I think when, a year ago, when we changed that or so, around there. Since then, we've recommended, I believe, quite a few times. I don't know that we've ever done a no recommendation, but I guess it somewhat seems prudent in this case, since there's already been a violation, and we're not the final say anyway. It'd be tough to say yes, that's for sure.
So if warranted, if you wanted to do more of a neutral stance, we would just amend the resolution to read that the city of Norfolk hereby provides no local recommendation of the above identified liquor license application, if that's the route you wanted to take. So we would just need a motion to amend the resolution.
Do we want any more discussion on it? I don't know. I wish the applicant was here, because I would ask why that application filled out no, you know, to any prior convictions, when actually there were some apparently found by law enforcement. So I don't necessarily think we're in a situation to probably approve or even deny this. I think the State Liquor Commission probably should have more say, or State Patrol on this than probably we should. That's just my thoughts. Yeah, with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we actually make a recommendation that this be sent to the Liquor Commission without any recommendation from local council.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, please vote. Do you need to read the...
I can. So the resolution will read that the city of Norfolk hereby provides no local recommendation of the above identified liquor license application and the manager application of Miranda Brae.
So we're voting?
So if you vote yes, yes, if you vote this as amended, it will give them a no local recommendation. All council members present voting in the affirmative, so Resolution 2024-65 is adopted as amended.
All right, moving on to the regular agenda. A motion to adopt Resolution 2024-66 approving a sidewalk waiver requested by Calvin and Peggy Sue Miller for a property located at 509 Southeastwood.
I'll make a motion for consideration. Consideration of Resolution 2024-66.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? And I think Val will be taking this over for us.
Yeah, I'll do an introduction for that for you guys. So this is a piece of property that was split into two pieces by a plat here a couple months ago, maybe, out on Eastwood between Omaha and Norfolk Avenue. So there is not a lot of residential currently out there at this time, and that is why the new owners of this lot that was platted off newly is coming in, asking for a sidewalk waiver, just in preparation for a building permit. We do not have that yet, but this is something to do in preparation for that. And just as sidewalk waivers, this is what we do to assure that as plats come through, the sidewalk note is on there, so that as we do move farther out or replat inside city, sometimes we don't have areas of sidewalk already inside city limits. This is a way to get that in place. And as it's farther out, the waiver process then gives you all a way to say how you want it to work in the future. It gets filed against the property, so that as it changes hands potentially over the years, then it doesn't have to come back to you to actually put the sidewalk in. We just call in the waiver, and it gets put in based on those conditions. So that's just kind of why we do things, too, if you have any questions.
Val, is it possible that we could get a video or a view of that property? And then also, just for clarification's sake, this runs concurrent with the property and not the applicant, correct?
Correct. It will be filed against the legal description of that piece of property, yes.
Val, where would the nearest sidewalk be to where the property or the plat, where there's no sidewalk, where the sidewalk waiver is being asked?
So let me find this here. So Eastwood, you'll see Eastwood splits Woodland Park in half. So as we're coming down here, you will see it. This is Norfolk Avenue, and it is one of these properties. This piece of property right here. Still getting used to the new Stanton County GIS map. So you're probably looking that whole mile of Eastwood between Norfolk Avenue and Omaha. There are no residential sidewalks, because really, you just kind of have this cluster of residential right in here. The rest of it's essentially ag or large lot.
Does anybody here want to speak on behalf of the owners of the property? Okay, come on up. If you wouldn't mind, state your name, and then just fill out the paperwork there.
Appreciate the council taking the time this evening for this. As we've seen on the plot map, thank you very much, Val, for pulling that up. That's a very nice shot. There is no sidewalks in the area. We recently acquired the property. When Karen did a split with this, it was something that was just simply added to the plot. It was already a lot, but she changed the dimension of it, made it deeper instead of wider. When she did that, then the city automatically puts on the sidewalk permit there. I just felt it was necessary to go ahead and get the sidewalk removed at this time, and then we can keep moving along with the county, putting in our access road to the property, and then, of course, permitting as we go along with building a new home on the property later on. I don't foresee any other places that are going to have this out in that area. It's pretty well established as rural residential, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Val, I do have one more question. The road in front of the property, is that paved? Or Calvin, maybe you could answer that. Is the road in front of your property paved?
Gravel.
Gravel, okay.
Yeah, county gravel. Stanton County maintains that.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yeah, can you read the planning commission report to us, please?
On October 8th, 2024, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the waiver of subdivision requirements submitted by Calvin and Peggy Sue Miller. The waiver of minimum subdivision sidewalk requirements is requested from those set out in Chapter 23-42 of the City Code of Norfolk on property addressed at 509 Southeastwood. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the sidewalk waiver request with a seven to zero vote.
Thank you. So a yes vote would then approve the waiver requested, so... Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2024-66 is adopted.
All right, moving on. I need a motion to approve a change order number four with BX Civil in construction for Benjamin Avenue, 13th Street to First Street project, resulting in a net decrease of $220,760.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of change order number four.
Discussion. Steve, this is for you.
Yeah, mayor, or chair and council members, the change order before you, change order four with BX, kind of that, it's part of the process that we go through at the very end of the project as we bring the contract. We adjust the contract to meet the final constructed quantities, units and quantities. The change here before you is a net deduct of two... Let's see if I can find it here. It's a net deduct of $220,760.65, bringing the contract down to $12,704,227.42. The changes in here, there are some, several are just adjustments of the units associated with the many bid items. I can't remember exactly. I think there's around 200 bid items in the project. So many of these are just adjusting the final constructed units to the as-built units. There are some changes in here as well that were overlaps between the base bid and the alternate bid that were awarded, and so some of those are in here. I'd say some of the larger deducts are more related to that. The next change order, that would be the final change order that would come in, I would not expect to see very much at this point in terms of changes in unit quantities. I think we're pretty much through that. The final change order would more specifically deal with liquidated damages, which again would be a negative to the contract and further reduce the contract price.
It's always nice when you bring a deduct to us. It's a easier discuss. So any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, on to item 22. We need a motion of consideration of approval of a public transportation funding agreement with the Norfolk area, or Norfolk area transit company, a nonprofit corporation, for two separate payments of $62,500 for a total of $125,000. And this is, we'll direct the discussion to Andy.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Thank you, council.
The city of Norfolk has been and continues to be a major funder for Norfolk area transit. We have served for several years as the primary for their local match. And so what this agreement is, is it's a term for one year, so this will supersede the current agreement that we have, and will provide funding for this additional fiscal year. So this will end on September 30th of 2025. And at that time, we'll come back and revisit a new agreement. So this is, again, just for this current fiscal year that we're entering right now. The current amount for this is $125,000. If you recall, during the budget session, $100,000 was proposed, and council did, upon the request of the Transit Board, which I see a couple of them are here tonight, did request to have that up to $125,000 for additional services and to keep some of those going. So the council did vote to increase that to $125,000 as requested, so this agreement is in keeping with that. There's been a few changes to the agreement, but nothing that I would say is that significant. We still have all the reporting requirements. We've got any changes to service, they have to give us reasonable notice to those things. So we've worked with them through this process pretty well, I think, to get this, what I think is a pretty good agreement. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, unless Randy would have anything he'd like to add to that.
No, I don't have anything, but I'd answer questions if anybody has any.
I'm assuming they're asking for two separate payments because it helps them with their matching funds from the state? Is that correct? Is that why we're breaking up into two payments, instead of just having the one payment?
They requested that these payments be speeded up, and I'm not sure what the exact reason for that was. I think just to help with their cash flow.
Is it a cash flow issue, or because it helps them get their matching funds?
I don't know the answer to that for sure.
Yeah, if somebody's here that could come in and discuss that, please.
Randy, traditionally, we split this up into four payments, don't we?
Correct.
Yeah.
Brian Blucker. It is for cash flow. This is the local match, so it doesn't help with any additional match that comes in from the state.
Is there any additional public input? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Please vote.
Or vote, yeah, vote. It says roll call on my sheet, so...
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, moving on to item number 23. Motion to adopt a consideration for approval of Resolution 2024-67 to clarify the status of the city. Councilperson appointed to the Norfolk Area Transit Board pursuant to Resolution Number 2023-13 shall serve in a non-voting ex officio capacity.
I'll have a consideration of approval of Resolution 2024-67.
Danny, I believe this will be directed at you for discussion.
Yes, thank you. So this resolution is ultimately amending a prior resolution that was done on February 21st of 2023. At the time, the city helped to provide a final cash match in order to keep Norfolk area transit alive, if you will, and funded. At the time, as we were negotiating with Transit, one of the requests was that we had a council member that was serving on their board in an official role. Since that time, the transit organization is now requesting that we have that individual serving in an ex officio role. And the reason for that, as I understand it, I don't know if there's anyone here that can speak to it any longer, I think he just left, but my understanding is that they wanted an ex officio role, so that when there are transit matters involved before the city council, the councilman's able to be involved in those conversations. Where right now, our city code is really strict in terms of what is a conflict of interest, what is not a conflict of interest, and we are looking at modifying that in the next few months here. Because we were doing the funding agreement right now, we thought it would make sense to bring it forward at this time, because this language would be in the funding agreement, but we also needed an updated resolution if we were moving from a voting member of the Transit Board to an ex officio. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I believe at this time, the councilperson we have on there is Councilman Webb.
That's correct.
Okay.
Danny, do you know their board has grown at all from last year?
In terms of size, I do not know that.
Now, is Councilman Webb going to continue on the board in this capacity, or do we appoint a new person to that board?
I believe Councilman Webb is going to continue at this time. I don't know exactly when his term is up. I think the main reason for moving towards this, I know that he's very active with this board. I think the concern is just because of how strict our city code is, and he's not profiting in any way from his involvement with Transit, but because it is a private, a nonprofit Transit Board, he's not able to come back and speak with the council and, you know, give updates from the board as it pertains to funding agreements and other things, just because of how strict our code is. So they asked to move to an ex officio role for that purpose. He'll still be involved, he just won't be a voting member of that board. He'll still be involved, he just won't be a voting member of that board.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any public input at this time? Right, seeing nothing, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-two-four dash sixty-seven is adopted.
All right, moving on to item number twenty-four. I need a motion to consider of approval of the interim significant industrial user agreement with wastewater discharge to the city of Norfolk sanitary sewer system for milk specialties company doing business as Milk Specialties Global or MSG.
I'll offer for consideration approval of the interim significant industrial user agreement.
Second.
The motion is second, so I go to further discussion now, and Steve, I believe you'll be handling this.
Steve Ramos, City Engineer and Public Works Director, and joining me is Rob Huntley, our manager over at wastewater plant. Now, you want to go ahead and bring that up. Mr. Chair and councilmembers, before I start specifically about the permit, just kind of wanted to walk through and answer a couple of questions that have been going on within the community and certainly had questions that elected officials have as well, relative to the BOD loading at the plant and how the permit, this permit impacts that, as well as talking a little bit about the odor issues from twenty, that started occurring kind of mid-two-zero-twenty-three through spring of two-four. There's been some odor issues again this, this summer as well, so I want to address those as we go into the permit conversation. So, the chart in front of you has four columns. The first one, the current status, Milk Specialties, we have them operating at approximately eight-thousand pounds of BOD a day. I guess before I go through this, I'll explain what the chart is. So, up at the top, the top-left corner of the chart talks about the BOD loading within the community. City population basis for that is twenty-six thousand, the Woodland Park population roughly twenty-five hundred. We have other influx of workers and students that come into the community on a daily basis. So, our population basis is roughly thirty-one thousand. You run that through a number of point-one-seven pounds per person per day, and that gives you five-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy pounds of BOD coming from that population base. We estimate the commercial base to be approximately equal to the population base, the commercial side being restaurants, grocery stores, you know, our general businesses. So, again, another fifty-two-seventy there. And we get into our industrial loading, you'll see Milk Specialties there, eight-thousand, Highland Roberts averaging around fifty-two-hundred, Wizpac fourteen-twenty-ish, Connaught Tech three-hundred, Henningson Foods a little under two-hundred, and Covidian. So, a total industrial load roughly fifteen, little over fifteen thousand. Add the industrial loading to our population base and commercial base, and we're at roughly twenty-six thousand pounds of BOD per day. Our plant has a general placard capacity, about forty thousand pounds, that's the number at the bottom. So, on an average day, we're running about sixty-four percent of the plant's load. The permit that we'll talk about here, over the next year would bump Milk Specialties up to twelve thousand pounds. So, at twelve thousand pounds, that would move our total BOD loading on a daily basis to right at thirty thousand pounds, or a little over seventy-four percent, seventy-five I want to go to the far column now and talk about the odor issues that developed in twenty-three and twenty-four. So, as Milk Specialties went through a fairly substantial expansion of their facility in twenty-two, twenty-three, as they were bringing that online, they were bringing on a new, a new, a new product line. And as they were bringing that online and starting that, they had some high loads that were coming at us. We started having conversations with them in May, advising them to manage those loads as best they could. As we went into, as November of twenty-three hit, they started to bring on their second line, and I believe that's the case night line. And as they started to try and bring the case night line on simultaneous with their historic product line, we started to see larger jumps in their daily BOD loading. Ultimately, as we go into the winter months, the colder months, as we are getting some of those larger shock loads of BOD, our plant capacity started to drop. And so, as we started to go into the, into the winter months, we saw that plant capacity drop. And again, this chart shows on a, you know, if they were to hit us with twenty thousand pounds of BOD on a specific day, that resulted in about one-hundred-and-twenty-six percent of our, of our capacity, assuming our capacity had dropped from forty thousand pounds to thirty thousand pounds. That was causing odor. And whenever they would hit us with those shock loads, that was a function of odor. Ultimately, in March, late March of twenty-three, we ordered a shutdown, a shutdown order, and they stopped production, and there were other things that went on associated with that. We worked through that over about a week, week-and-a-half period, brought them back up online, allowed them to come back up, and we slowly stepped up over probably about a two-month timeframe back up to about eight thousand pounds, which is where they've been operating now since, I'd say, late, late May. More recently, the odor issues, so as a, once, once we brought the plant back online in April, mid-April, the odor issues that have occurred have not been related to the operation of the plant or any overloading at the plant. They, MSG was installing some load control systems, basically some large storage tanks behind their main operation. As they installed those tanks, their, those tanks take high-concentration loads, and there's some air diffusion going on in there, and they trickle those loads back out. Part of the system in there failed. MSG is here with us today, both their Vice President for West Operations as well as their, I believe his title is Vice President for Local Operations. So, those, those two individuals are here, they'd be able to answer some more specific questions around that. I think what I wanted to point out is the odor issues occurring in twenty-three and spring of twenty-four were related to the operation of the plant and the overloading of the plant. We've been working with them on these, on these more recent issues relative to the storage tanks behind the plant. My understanding is the diffuser system that was originally installed failed fairly quick. They ordered a new diffuser system, and I think they're waiting for us to finish, to do some, some work on one of our cells, and then they're going to install a new diffuser We'll, we'll go into the, to the plant conversation and then certainly open it up for questions or into the, the permit conversation. So, our permit with all of our industrial users is a permit that we like to prepare in partnership with our, with our industries. Ultimately, the permit that we have, this is our permit that we regulate their effluent to our plant, and we are, we have one-hundred percent control over the permit. At any time, we can terminate the permit, we can modify the permit, we can reissue a permit. We like to have their signature on their, on the permit as just a recognition that we've worked through this together and we're partners in this. But if things start to fall apart and we need to issue a new permit, pullback, shutdown, we have one-hundred percent control over that. If we issue this, and in six months we decide that we want to redo the permit for some reason, we can, we, we issue a letter saying that we're going to terminate the permit, and we can issue a new permit without any signature from them. Again, it's nice to have their signature on the permit as recognition, but that is not necessarily. I run through that just to issue, or just to make the statement that we control the permit. We can terminate it, we can modify it, we can reissue it at any time. This permit does a couple of things. It does set limits for their operation. Chart B one would be their initial, initial limits of operation for loading on our plant. Chart B two is a step-up table, so over the next year on a quarterly basis, provided they're proving to us that they can operate the plant within the limits provided, we will step the load up, and then they can, you know, they need to prove to us again that they can operate within that, and we can step it up. Just like we can step it up, we can step it backwards if we need to. And again, we can ultimately terminate the permit and reissue something different. The other thing the permit does aside from setting those load limits on a, from a daily load limit basis, this permit now, historically, all of our industries have been on a single-tiered rate structure for effluent loading. This permit sets a three-tiered rate structure in place, so they pay a base load for the first so many pounds. When they hit that, then they hit a, they hit a tier-two rate, which is twice the load rate of the base load, and when they exceed that and go to tier-three, they're paying three times the base load rate. Ultimately, again, back early September, we also put another ordinance in place. If they exceed the ultimate loading that we're providing on the daily load and maximum daily load basis in charts B one and B two, if they exceed the total poundage that we're providing, there's another fee that they pay in there of a thousand dollars a day per industrial unit. So, with that, I'm going to open it up for questions. Rob's here to help answer any questions you would have, and again, if you'd
Right.
You'd like to hear from MSG and ask MSG some questions about their operation, they do have, like I say, the plant operator is new, I think he's been here a couple of weeks at the most, and be happy to introduce him to you as well.
I got a question for you, Steve. You mentioned that they're waiting for one of our cells to come online before they can...
So, we, we've been messaging to all of our industry that we need to take a cell down here in middle of October, we need to redo our diffusers, replace our diffusers, and so I think Rob's doing that this week.
Yeah.
So, timelines this week, so with the smell and everything, that'll help.
You know, if everything goes good, we should be up and running by next Tuesday, all four cells again, so.
All four cells next Tuesday, you said, okay.
If everything goes good, we're going to work through the weekend and kind of try and knock it out, so just to get back up and going.
And that would directly affect what kind of smell we're, word for is smelling right now?
Right now, shouldn't be seeing anything off the plant.
Let Rob talk about that. Yeah, not from the plant, but I mean, it's going to help Milk Specialties eliminate the smell that's coming from there.
Right.
Right.
Would you like me to bring up Milk Specialties?
Yeah, I think it'd be good, yeah.
Dan?
Good evening.
So, Zoran is the new manager, and Dan Garcia here is VP for West Coast Operations.
Good evening, everyone. A pleasure.
And we'll need you to sign.
So, I just want to introduce myself. Been in the dairy industry for about twenty-seven years. This is my seven or eighth side. I've been leading successfully, wastewater two certified actually, and built wastewater plants for other facilities throughout the dairy. Been about two greenfield projects, two brownfield projects for different dairy corporations. So, I've been in dairy pretty much thirty years, seen everything about once, done about everything once, and hope to be a good partner in the community. I can't speak for what happened in the past, but definitely for the future, I got some really strict plans in place for this not to happen again. I get every two hours an update on our wastewater and our wastewater numbers throughout the whole night, and a phone call if anything goes out of order. And I've been out on the floor for like two weeks, making sure that we're not spilling or sending anything down to the wastewater and making it transition easier. So, like I said, I can't say what happened in the past, I'm really sorry if we did something wrong, but for the future, I'll be keeping a really close eye on it, and I'll be on-site twenty-four-seven. I only live like a mile away from the plant, and I'm in a community, so I'll be able to monitor it really closely. And we've done a lot of improvements since then, we're getting a RO on place right now that's going to help with high-strength waste in case we do have a spill. We're going to put two silos up, you're going to see in the Friday, we're standing them up in case we do have a really significant spill, we can divert to the RO, RO will take the water out, clean it up, and the high-strength waste will go into those silos, and we can truck that offside without hitting the wastewater treatment plant and causing any issues. There hasn't been any odor since I arrived on the site from the plant side. We do have diffusers ready to go, our tank's about thirty percent of...
When did you say you arrived on-site?
I arrived on the seventh.
Seventh of this month, okay, all right.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, we have the diffusers ready to be installed, got the people on-site actually right now. Our tank's about thirty percent, it's a million gallons, it's about three-hundred-thousand gallons in the tank currently right now. If we can draw it down, or we can shut it and install it, that would help all of us. But we are waiting for the wastewater to get caught up, so we can do that work. And I have two engineers full-time on-site, they are designated to that wastewater treatment plan, we're getting the RO on-site. So, I think we got a lot of good people paying close attention to what's going on. We definitely don't want to repeat that, and I think we want to be a good partner going forward. I'm going to attend the council meeting as much as I can, and if you guys have any questions, you know, if you want to come by, stop by, talk to me, I'm there. Appreciate it.
Any additional questions, while they're up here?
I'll, I'll ask one. I think what's probably not, I guess, being discussed, not, not just the wastewater, but the smell coming from the plant, and I believe, if I'm thinking right, the diffuser will help eliminate that smell that we're just getting from the plant. Has nothing to do with the wastewater and the smell from the wastewater plant being overloaded, but
That's correct.
That will help eliminate what the whole town has been smelling for months, if I'm thinking right.
Yeah, absolutely. Part of the issue that we had was when the diffuser failed initially after install, we basically got a dead spot in our tank. That created the issue and allowed the odor to form. We took multiple steps to knock that back down, and since then, even though the diffuser isn't fully operational yet, we haven't had any issues with odor since then, so.
Like I said, we monitor it literally every two hours. We have a full-time staff of four operators and a manager and a backup manager for that side. So, we invested a ton of resources, experience, just to make sure we get this under control. And believe me, it's going to stay under control. I know so. I died it too many times not to.
So, previously, these were, these were overlooked issues that now are addressed?
Well, there were some issues that were outside of our control. We invested three-and-a-half million dollars to put the equalization system in, as well as a calamity system, to ensure that the spills, if they do occur, do not reach our system and do not exit ours. So, since that investment, we had the tank online, started running it, and then had the issue with the diffuser. However, since then, we've taken additional steps to keep that mitigated in the interim, and once we get the diffuser replaced and fixed here in the next week or two, once we're allowed to with the city's work that they're doing at their site, we should be completely square.
Believe me, I spent half of my day watching what's going on in that drain.
It's probably an understatement.
Yeah.
I think we all appreciate the work that you put in to eliminate the situation that we've had over the last year or so, so I think that's important, that we're addressing it now and getting this thing ironed out.
We want to get it done right.
Right.
And want to be there for the community.
Right.
I mean, we're employing one-hundred-and-thirty-five people from this community. We also in a contract for one-point-four million pounds of milk that comes out of this area that has to be processed every day, and farmers rely on us. Before this, I worked twenty years for a co-op that was farmer-owned, I know how hard it is for them to make money, so we can't fail. If we can't process their milk, the milk goes down the ground, nobody gets paid. Makes it really hard. So, we want to be successful.
I think this says a lot going into the future of your guys' commitment, but also your commitment to, your investment in your, in your plant and in our community as well. So, that's appreciated also.
Thank you, appreciate it. And we want to keep investing for the future, we're there to stay, and I know, and it's a small community, and those are good paying jobs and good taxes that come out of that.
I think I've been part of the, I've been through the process with this, with through subcommittee, and actually, I got to say that Steve Ramos and Rob Huntley have went above and beyond trying to get this, helping, helping you, helping us, helping everybody get this figured out, and this permit is, is the right step and, or the direction.
Right direction.
Yeah, the right direction, the first step in the right direction, thank you.
And I want to really, Rob, you did a great job. We meet, we're meeting quite frequently now, I want to establish the communication, so if you do have issues, then I do appreciate it. Yes, sir?
I'd like to just kind of add on to that, too. You know, this is a situation where some of the items in this permit are... You know, this is a situation where some of the items in this permit are actually going to cost you some money. But I appreciate instead of being adversarial in this, that you guys are collaborating to get this done together. And it sounds like you appreciate each other's side of the situation.
It's been a bit of a process. I think I've been involved since mid-December of last year and Steve and I have met very frequently over the, the past several months. But it's, it's good to be working towards a resolution and actually seeing a finish line here, so that's good.
Thank you.
The last, the last thing I want to point out about the chart that's in front of you and not to, we won't spend too much time on that is the, the chart called future loading. The next council meeting, we'll be bringing forward a contract for preliminary design of expansion of the WPC facility relative, so that we can look at the loading as we go forward and figure out, you know, what the best route is. So this permit is structured as an interim permit. And the reason for that is we want to get down, get, get that study moving for preliminary design. I do believe, I think digester is going to be one of the things at the top of the list coming out of that for a couple of reasons. Number one is just to point out that with a digester in place, Milk Specialties and both, and Highland Roberts, both of those BOD loads, as well as their other, their TSS and TKN loads would go directly to the digester through a force main. Here, I'm just showing a reduction in the milk specialties loading. The reality is that that 5,000 pounds from Highland Roberts would probably drop down to about that same number. So you'd see additional load come off of our traditional system, our SBR system, our, our clarifiers, our trickling filters. And so by doing that, by putting the digester in, we're able to route Highland Roberts, Milk Specialties to the digester. We're able to isolate the cost of service to operate that digester for those industries so that we can create the right billing for them and make sure it's true. It also substantially, it creates a substantial amount of future load for the community to grow on. You know, if that number's at 40%, we have 60% of growth ahead of us. And so, just a couple of reasons, I think the digester's probably a good outcome, but we'll see as we go into it. I think one other reason would be there's some funding available right now at both the state and federal level that with some capital contribution from those two industries, capturing some grants available, there would be no cost to our residential and commercial fee structure to, to accomplish a digester because that would begin be completely wrapped around our industrial customers. Any more questions for me, councilman?
Thanks, Steve. Any comments from the public? Any additional comments, council? Right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Right, moving on to item number 25. Need a motion for the first reading of discussion for approval of ordinance number 5901, amending section 2-5 of the official city code to update library fees, to update athletic fees and add team locker and ice rink fees to update police division fees for breath tests.
I'll offer for consideration approval of ordinance 5901, amending section 2-5.
Second. All right, we have a motion of second. Let's have some discussion. Now that would be direct, who's taking this, least? Andy? Okay.
I, I can introduce it. Well, as you can see, the agenda item itself kind of outlines these, these fees here are really applicable to only a few divisions. The city has many, many, many fees. So this ordinance that you have here is only changing a number of them, primarily due to library fees, athletic fees, team locker and ice rink fees, and then there's a few police division fees as well in there. So we do have staff from Parks and Rec as well as the library if there's questions on specific fees in here and some of the rationale behind those. But I'll, in the, the staff memo, it says library fees are being consolidated so that all items except hotspots have the same overdue fee. And this reduces the fine burden on the public while still keeping an accountability structure in place. And they're also eliminating some outdated fees that are no longer charged. And the photocopy fees are set by the company who operates the photocopier for the public, so that fee is being removed from the ordinance as well. And then our Parks Rec Director Nate Powell is also here tonight to talk about parks fees if there are any specific questions.
I'll, I'll just hit on that. Maybe we should have a discussion of what the ice rink fees are, since it's all a new item.
Yeah, definitely.
Maybe Nate could just at least touch on some of that stuff.
Absolutely. Chair, council, thank you. The ice rink fees, we do have the new outdoor ice rink at Johnson Park. That'll be opening hopefully around Thanksgiving, weather permitting. We do want to set some fees for that. We do have those before you. Do you want me to go through or do you have specific questions on those fees?
I, I just thought it would be prudent to make up public just what's out there.
Yep.
Rather than having to go through it themselves.
So we'll have some open skate fees, which, which will be open skate times where the public can just come rent skates, go out, go ice skating. That's, that's daily in the afternoon and also on the weekends, most of the day on Saturday and most of the day on Sunday as well.
Are there any time constraints on that at all during the day? I mean, is it for two hours or is it all day or?
Yep, I believe Ms. Evans is here. She can talk to you about specific hours here.
Good evening. PJ Evans, Parks Recreation. Monday through Thursday would be five to eight and then Friday, five to nine, Saturday, 12 to eight, Sunday, 12 to seven.
That's just when they can rent or?
That's the open skate times. The rentals would be after open skate to allow for the season pass holders to be able to utilize their season pass the whole time. Currently, we do that at Aqua Venture as well.
But I think like Corey was saying to this, if we could just get an overview a little bit, just kind of inform the public, like what are the skating hours, how, you know, when is it open? Just maybe elaborate a little bit more on this since it's new.
Yep. So she mentioned the, the open skate time is when the public can come and rent skates and come skating on the ice rink. Outside of that time, it's open for groups such as if there's hockey groups or birthday parties or anything like that, they would, they'd be able to rent it outside of those, those times that Ms. Evans just mentioned.
And you said there's season pass options too?
There are season pass options as well. They, one time fees, family pass of six, same as Aqua Ventures.
And now do they have to skate in the open time or they can skate anytime?
That would be during the open time.
Okay.
What, what's the times that the, I guess, the skating rink would be open? I mean, is it 24/7 or what, what do we got for? If they're not renting skates, can they use it anytime? What do we?
Yep, no, it, it'll be closed outside of the time that we've mentioned. We will also have programmed events going on outside of those times, which would be specific to specific age groups or specific groups. And then it'd also be rentable for a specific group. And a youth group that wants to rent it in the evening, they could rent it or they can rent it after school or during the day. If there's a homeschool group that wants to rent it, they'd be able to rent it during that time. So it's always available, but it always has to be staffed. So it's not just walk up and go ice skating.
I guess I'll hit on this a little bit further because I'm not, I don't think I'm getting where I want to go. If I want to rent this at midnight, can I rent it at midnight?
The park closes at 10:00, so.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yes.
What's the, what's the hours?
So park hours are generally around 6:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Most, most parks close at 10:00 PM.
And so there's a possibility if somebody wanted to rent this, they could rent it, say at nine o'clock at night for an hour?
That's correct. And then we would shut the lights off and.
There isn't, would there always be an attendant there or only when? I mean, there's going to be somebody there from 6:00 till 10:00 every single day?
There's, there's someone there for open skate times and then, and then a rentable, a rental. We would have staff there as well during that time, during a rental. So if you wanted to rent it for an hour, the fee that we have is $150 and that would be a group of any size, as long as we have skates available to rent to them. Once we run out, we run out. And that would be the size group that we would have, that would be able to use it. And that pretty much is our capacity.
What, what is the capacity of the, like, how many, how big a group are you looking at?
Yeah, the capacity, I don't, how many skates do, do we have available? I don't have a capacity on me right now. Yeah.
On the, the ice rink rental at 150 an hour and includes concessions, is, is that still concessions for, for purchase? Or is that included? Can they?
That would, the concessions would be, the skates are included and the, there would be concessions available for purchase.
For purchase?
Yes.
If I have my own skates, what's the cost?
So there's a, the fee for adult open skate would be $5, youth would be four if you have your own skates. And then it'd be additional three to rent skates.
And this, do we also include the, oh, I don't know what you exactly call them, but the support skates for ones or younger ones that can't skate very well, that we have those?
Yes, we have skate helpers and those just come with the cost of admission, so you could just use those.
I'll need that. Will we, will, will any hockey be able to be played on the ice skating, ice skating rink here?
I'm sorry, the question was hockey?
Yeah, hockey, please.
Yep. Three on three is what we're, you know, three on three tournaments is what we'll have during that. And we're, we're looking for, we're still working through some details, but we'll have freestyle open times where we'll, we'll host the event and anyone who enjoys hockey can come and play during that time. Okay.
You putting a team together? I am not. Okay, all right.
Any other questions on the ice skating?
Is, so is there a phone number out there or there's a phone number for somebody to reach? And is somebody on call all the time during these times? How's?
We have the Parks and Rec number and my cell phone number is on there as well. But we are working with IT on putting a phone there where people would be able to call to ask questions during the evening hours. And there's 150 skates that we purchased.
150? Is there a timeframe? Let's say, let's say I decide at 5:00 at night, I want to rent the place from 9:00 to 10:00. I mean, can anybody, can you set up a reservation at any point in time and get on or how, how is this? I find it, I'll be honest, I mean, I know we're here to talk about fees, but it's going to be somewhat difficult to have somebody on call, I would think, from 6:00 to 10:00 every single day.
No, it is, it is staffed and open to the public during open skate time. So you can't, you couldn't rent it during that time.
Right, but, okay, I'm sorry. So outside of that time, somebody is on call?
Outside of that time, we would have, we have, we would have.
DJ's on call or cell phone's on her?
It would be scheduled. It would be scheduled, so we would schedule the staff accordingly to those, to those times.
I think what, what councilman's, if I'm understanding your question, Corey, you're saying that if you, if you, on a Saturday afternoon, you decide, you know what, tonight at 9:00, I want to go and I want to rent that for an hour myself exclusively or me and my friends want to go there. I'm hearing from Parks and Rec that that's probably not going to be an option because we need to have all of the information from you ahead of time. We need to have the fee collected. We've got to have an agreement signed, a rental use agreement and staff availability to have somebody there. So I don't think that's going to be possible. So I think our policies will have, so you're going to have to pre-rent those to make sure that we even have staff availability for that. Is that?
That is where I was going because I don't want to say we're open to it.
No.
But then turn somebody away. So there's got to be something in place that, in a way of.
It will be two weeks for the staff to give, for me to be able to schedule stuff.
There we go.
Yes.
That's what I'm looking for.
I'll touch on the team lockers real quick too. That's a new facility as well. One of the fees, it's not in here. The fee in here for a hundred dollars is groups that are outside our youth, our youth. So all of our associations that play softball and baseball, soccer in our community, as part of their agreement, they'll be able to schedule that with our sports supervisor out there and use that facility. And that'll be included in their agreement next year, moving forward. So that'll be available to all the youth, which was what the Kohler donation wanted to see is a facility for youth and that's what we, we are building. So if you're not part of an association that has a practice agreement with the city, then you would pay a hundred dollars an hour to rent that facility.
Any other questions, council?
I don't have any questions about this, but looking at the, at the increase of fees, they're, they're very minimal. They're just, they're very minimal for anything, any other fees and the new fees for this ice skating rink. If anybody's looked at them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public input? And make sure and state your name so I don't interrupt you.
What are you supposed to ask first?
What's that? Sorry?
What are you supposed to ask?
Please state your name.
David Jansma. I guess my only comment is, is it prudent to have fees on a brand new facility that we're trying to promote and get everyone in the community involved, including people that may not be able to afford $5 or $4? Wouldn't you rather see people on the rink using it? Maybe if they have to rent it, their skates include that in their fee to skate? I mean, we're trying to promote this big facility we did, so maybe we ought to think about waiving the fees and see if we actually get people, including if we get winter and stuff like that. It's my only comment.
It's a good point, though. Anyone else? Yeah, you want to maybe address that a little bit for us?
The fees are set to just recoup the costs of operations. It's not, it's not profitable or it's, it's just a break even point.
Wasn't, wasn't it a time at Aqua Venture we offered reduced fees? Or am I making my?
Wednesdays after four is half price at Aqua Venture and there's not currently.
So it might be something, maybe in the future, we could do something like that for the ice rink.
Definitely do a, a discount day. I think as we find out where our hour, or if nobody's coming on a particular night, it'd be a good thing to do.
Yeah.
Is to promote it, is to keep it, keep it in use.
Okay, thank you.
I want to hit on that a little bit because I think he has a point where if you're bringing your own skates, no different than if you're bringing your own bat and ball to a baseball field. We don't pay a fee because the lights are on. And we all know, whether it's Aqua Venture or whatever, parks is, is for the public, it's not a moneymaker. It's, you're never going to recoup your money in, in this skating rink. I, I mean, there's no way. And so it, it's minimal that. I, I just don't see where you, you'd make enough money to, to recoup costs. I, I get it for renting it, things like that, but I, I think he has a valid point where if you're bringing your own skates, why would you have to pay a fee to use a park?
When, if you get a group pass, it's only 1667 to a person. So it's to use it the whole season and people will go at Madison County Exchange and combine together to, to fill a, a pass of six.
So you're setting it up somewhat like Aqua Ventures, what you're saying?
That's correct. So you can pay, I mean, if you go on, on, if I got a group pass with, you know, five of you, we're only paying 1667 a person.
So, so the fee is? So so the fee is basically to recoup the cost of a tenant? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, we have two staff there all the time. And then also the cost of the chillers is right around twelve thousand a year. So it's it's not much, we're not talking about very much money here, but between the costs of the chillers and the staffs, right around that fifty thousand dollar range and we're trying to recoup that.
I guess if you're relating it similar to Aqua Venture, I somewhat get it. But but in the initial startup, maybe there is something of just letting people use the facility and see if they like it or not, or that are never skated before. I've never skated. I probably won't do it. I'll I'll crack my head open and.
And we can do a lot of that through our.
Even with a helper.
We we can do that through our programming outside of the open skate. So that's the fees are for the open skate time. It's not the programming, which through that programming, we can have programs for various groups that maybe can't afford or need or ways to them to come and learn how to skate. We can do that through our programming.
Yeah. I I think it's valid, at least to have some open skate nights or something like that. But there's no.
I agree with you.
If I can chime in here for a second with just an idea, I think adopting the fees is good, but I none of it will bar us and the department and staff from offering like a free opening weekend to the community, you know, for the kickoff weekend when we start. We can always make that free for the public. We can designate certain times throughout, you know, holiday breaks, things like that, you know, just to kind of boost usage. And certainly, if you have concessions going, I mean, that's going to be more money in people's pockets to buy snacks and candy and other things, too. So if you offer those promotional type of things. And again, I think the point, Mr. Jansma's point to see how the usage goes and maybe offer it free at first, I think that's a good idea and that's something that staff will look at. Look at that. But adopting the fee structure, at least we have something in place for for charges, I do think is is helpful for us to have.
Council, acting mayor, my name's David Jansma. I think we're getting it wrong. We want this to succeed. How we get it to succeed is getting people there. You get people there by offering it free, not coming up with some stupid little idea of maybe one weekend, we're going to do it free and everything. Yes, we got chillers. Yes, we live in Nebraska. Yes, we had to buy a Zamboni. Somebody needs to trim trees or we're going to have a lot of problems. No, I'm not ice skating. But in the current situation we all are in, where everything's too expensive, we're trying to promote it to make the city, do it for free for a year. Move on with your lives. I'm probably older than everybody here. We used to flood Central Park and the tennis or the basketball court over there. That was the ice skating rinks, and it worked pretty good. But don't pass this right now. Or get it divided up and they can come back, come up with a general idea. Because five, four dollars isn't much to some of us, but it is to a lot of the community. They have a family of five. Think about this, guys.
Well, we've got additional fees on this, too. So but I think the the point being made is duly taken. I think that we should offer some discussion and probably maybe at the next council meeting on how we want to structure that as far as if we're going to provide a year worth, you know, a year's worth of free skating or whatnot or how that looks like moving forward. But I think we're kind of all in agreement that's it's a pretty good idea, so.
Yeah, I to to the point, I think there there still needs to be some sort of structure for, you know, in there for fees, whether that's for parties or things like that. And obviously, there's more. There's more fees in this ordinance than just the the skate rink. But I think we could still make that discussion of whether that's three months, six months a year, whatever that is, even if this got passed.
Right. Would that be something we get on the next agenda for the next next council meeting? Andy, would that be too soon for that or is that because we're going to be opening up here pretty soon?
So are you? Are you saying that we would have some type of an action by council to offer the ice skating rink for free for the first entire season?
I think that's something I think we'd like to see brought in front of us. Then we can have some more discussion about it at that time, too.
What I was, I think what I was saying, Shane, is that it could be passed and still allow that to happen.
That's what I'm getting at. Yeah, we have to pass.
This whole thing could still pass, but we, Park City or or maybe the Park Board is involved in that of what that would look like for this first year beyond.
Sure, I think for a budget item, we can at least bring something back to council to acknowledge what we estimate that would cost and whether that's something that we think we can build into the existing budget of what we've got for resources to do. At least we can put a plan together. I think we can put something rough together for you.
That would be good.
At the end of the day, that's the that's the big question, but.
We we can pass this and still waive this. Right. For even for even the first year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that that sounds like a fair. And it has more fees in it than just the ice skating rink. This is all kinds of different things. Right. But but it sounds fair to me as if that's if that's the route we want to go. But I guess I would question or would be curious to know what the recommendation of our Park Board is, which is made up of citizens from all aspects and in different organizations that they may represent.
I just wanted to point out that as a note, with two council members not present and a council member acting mayor, this can only pass on first reading only tonight, so there is no way for this to pass on second and third tonight.
Good point. Thank you.
That's that would be, yeah, that's a good point.
That'll give us more time for discussion.
Right.
Thank you.
We could also still set the fees and then I can take it to the board. I'm sure the board would support having it free for the first year, but then at least the fees are set and done. And then we can revisit after the season, see how it goes. And we'll bring our fee recommendation in before the ice rink season next year. And if if we want to continue the free, we can do that at that time and and reset that. But however you would like to do it, but I can definitely take this to the board on and then on the twenty-first, just before, just before we open.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any additional discussion? Okay, can I get a short time, please?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section two dash five of the official city code to update library fees, to update athletic fees and add team locker and ice rink fees, to update police division fees for breath tests, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for this publication of this ordinance and pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members, all council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty, ordinance number fifty-nine oh-one passes on first reading only.
And we will not be voting on second and third tonight because.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that being the end of our agenda here, I call to adjourn.